While we're waiting on Mr. Madden to get back with the little piece of video we need, presentation we need, tonight's a little bit different than a normal council, a regular scheduled council meeting. It will be preceded by a public, let me get the right title here, a public hearing concerning the Indigo Point Pump Station. Not much different than our public comments for a regular council meeting, but let me go over as far as if you want to address council during the public hearing, which will be specifically to the Indigo Point Pump Station. Any person wishing to address the council needs to fill out the speaker's log before the start of the meeting. I've got one. Is this the public hearing or the public comments? Both? Okay. All right. So we've got those then. Time limit, we'll stay with the length of the agenda. We got three minutes or less. Applicants on public hearing items and their attorneys representing experts and witnesses are not necessarily limited to a total of five minutes, but must be concise and coordinate their presentations to avoid repetition and unnecessary length. At the discretion of the chair, rebuttal comments by the applicant or applicant's representative may be allowed. If allowed, rebuttal comments will address matters and questions raised in the public hearing or questions raised by council. Rebuttal comments must be brief. The purpose of the public comment is to provide information and the speaker's view for consideration by council. Any questions raised by the speaker will not be addressed by council during the public hearing, but we will be referred for follow-up by the city administrator, our city staff, after the conclusion of the public hearing. It is not appropriate in the public hearing or public comment period for the speakers to debate the matter with other speakers. The audience are with members of council. All comments should be addressed to the chair. After being recognized by the chair, the council may pose questions to the speakers, any applicant representatives, and the city staff. Except when addressing a direct question from a council member, all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole and not to individual members. A lot of that. This time is 7:09. Let's consider ourselves into the public hearing for Indigo Point Pump Station. I'll ask Mr. Reynolds if he'll give us some background information on that. We'll get started.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'll do is just read the attached ordinance subtitle and then background. This ordinance is establishing a sewer pump station fee for additional parcels of the Indigo Point development and for certain properties near and adjacent to the Indigo Point development, creating a lien for unpaid sewer pump station fees and other matters related thereto. This fee will be placed on property owners in Indigo Point and Pine Forest subdivision to fund the maintenance and upkeep of the pump station that will be owned and operated by the City of Malden as it relates to the property owners in Pine Forest subdivision. Currently, the flow from the wastewater in their neighborhood is collected and transported to the Rewa wastewater treatment facility via a pump station in the Pine Forest neighborhood. That Pine Forest pump station is owned and maintained by Rewa, and Rewa has planned to decommission that pump station in the coming months. As such, the wastewater collected from the Pine Forest subdivision will be transported to the pump station located in Indigo Point subdivision. Indigo Point's pump station is owned and maintained by the City of Malden. All property owners whose wastewater is transported through Indigo Point Pump Station pay a fee for the operational and maintenance of the pump station. The fee is placed on the property owner's tax bill, and the fee is $73 per parcel. The main point of this, Mr. Mayor, is bringing online the properties that have been built out and CO'd in Indigo Point, bringing those online. So that has to be done each year as they come online, and then addressing the Pine Forest subdivision shutdown of a pump station that will be transported through the pump station owned by the City of Malden. So it's transferring from Rewa ownership to the Malden ownership, and as such, those property owners would need to pay the $73 fee as well. That's the background.
Given that background, we're in the public meeting portion. If anyone has any comments, questions about the Indigo Point Pump Station fee, now's your chance to speak. Hearing none, we'll call that short and sweet, and we will now exit the public hearing on the Indigo Point Pump Station and gavel this into our regular scheduled city council meeting of Monday, June 20, 2022, approximately 7:12 PM. So we welcome each and every one of you to our regular scheduled items tonight on our business of the City of Malden, for the City of Malden. First thing we'll do is we'll ask Ms. Kuzner if she'll provide our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Lord, please forgive us of our sins. I pray for the safety of our Supreme Court justices. Lord, please give them the courage to adhere to the U.S. Constitution and rule according to the law and not to the will of the people. I pray that the citizens accept the decisions of our justices and not turn to violence because they don't agree with the ruling. Violence breeds hate. We need more love and more acceptance. I pray for this council and that the decisions we make are pleasing to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
One of the things I always tend to overlook as far as the record, all the council members are present with the exception of Mr. Mattney, who reached out that he is tied up in a meeting, but will be here shortly. Until that time, we'll carry on without him. Also, that is record, our city administrator, Mr. Madden is here, along with our city attorney, Mr. Buggin, various department heads in the audience also. So thank you for being here. Tonight, I'd like to, first of all, have each one of you watch a short video of a very famous young man. Also reflected, Mr. Madden has joined us in chambers. Now, in case you couldn't see that clearly, that's a power lifter in the City of Malden. And I'm going to ask this young man if he would jolt me down front, Mr. Allen Stevens. This young man, I'm going to read you a fish part, but I got so much respect for what this young man, this young man went through the Special Olympics, the power lift. I'm going to see what I'll read you. I get it wrong, film it. Mr. Stevens, y'all want to join us up here or you want to... Okay. Wow. Whereas Allen Stevens is a power lifter from Malden who represented the upstate at the Special Olympics, USA Games in Orlando. And whereas the Special Olympics inspires confidence, brings people together through the power of sport. Whereas the Special Olympics brought together more than 5,500 athletes, coaches from across the country and the Caribbean. And whereas Allen Stevens faithfully trained for the Special Olympics four days a week, every week, more than a year. And whereas Mr. Stevens won the gold in the overall combination, silver in deadlift, gold in squats, and silver in bench. Whereas Mr. Stevens has overcome adversity, become a fantastic athlete. Therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, South Carolina, along with the city council and citizens of Malden, are proud of the dedication and accomplishment of Mr. Allen Stevens, wish him the best of luck in his future. I'm sure we'll get this right, too. The Stevens live in the neighborhood known as Holly Springs. Been there a long time, so thank you for everything there. Next item on our agenda is Greenville Transit Authority presentation.
Yeah, tough act to follow. Hi, my name is Walker Smith, and I am the current board chair of Greenville Transit Authority. So thank you very much for having me, and I will say this is my first public presentation in like three years, so it may be a little bumpy on the road, so just give me a little grace. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having me today. I would just like to spend a few minutes just kind of giving you an idea of what we've been doing at GTA and what we're planning to do in the next couple of years. In early 20, excuse me, late 2021, we partnered with Greenville Connects, which is a new collaboration to raise awareness about the importance of public transit to showcase our bus riders who rely on Greenlink and their services to get to them to their essential jobs. The fact that Greenlink did not have to close during the pandemic was pretty remarkable, and we got our workers to work. Some of these workers, you could show the video.
My name is Laura Johnson. I work at Food Lion. I enjoy working at Food Lion. I love my customers. I just want them all to be safe. I want everybody to be safe. My day is hectic. I depend on the buses, and as an essential worker, I'm just grateful and thankful for It's been a wonderful experience, because if it wasn't for the buses, I wouldn't be able to get to work. Back home or to visit my grandkids, I would just like to thank Greenlink for getting me to and from work safely.
GTA's current maintenance facility is a significant barrier to expanding our services throughout Greenville County. A larger facility is needed to maintain more buses. In January 2021...
Motion is our second.
Second.
Ms. King. Any discussion, corrections, highlights? Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't at this council meeting, so I won't be voting on the matter.
Thank you. Reynolds? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those like sign? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Special call meeting made the 26, 2022. Pleasure of council.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Is our second.
Second.
Reynolds? Got it. Right. Any discussion, corrections, highlights? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed like sign? Minutes are approved as submitted. Special call meeting June 15, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve as submitted.
Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Rayland? Any discussion, corrections, highlights? Hearing none, all's in favor as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Minutes as proposed as submitted. Thank you. Next item before us, this little bit of clarification, we have two public comments. The first public comment is for anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item. If there's anything on tonight's agenda, that now is the time to speak. The only person I have here is Ms. Miller in its own Malden wreck. Not an agenda item or is that an agenda? Okay, I don't see it on there. You want to wait around to the last one? Thank you. Look about the rules. Next item before us is a report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of city council, I do not have a report. However, Mr. Ozzy from Malden Chamber is here to provide a report. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Report from our standing committees, finance and policy. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a couple items coming up there fairly big for our city. The 2023 budget, we had our final budget workshop a couple weeks ago, but I did want to mention the City of Malden Job Fair. As a city, like any employer, is trying to find qualified employees. The city is doing a number of things, both digitally and as well as physically, trying to get people working for the city. So there is a job fair Wednesday, June 29, being put on at Malden Sports Center. That's going to be from 9:00 until 2:00. So if anybody knows people seeking positions, people seeking for better employment or better benefits or whatever it is, this would be a great opportunity to look at the many positions that the City of Malden has open. I did just want to mention that again. It's Wednesday, June 29, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Malden Sports Center, which is right there, for those of you don't know. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds? Of safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report at this time.
Hope it works, Mr. Craylon.
I have nothing to report at this time either.
You can now plan and develop it, Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. So at the Malden Cultural Center, which is right there, but before the other there, this Friday, Beaching Fridays continues. We've had great crowds. I know it was a little smaller this past Friday because people were freaked out and thought we were going to have a hurricane blow through, but it was a wonderful night. I do want to make sure that I thank Gina and Jeannie for the job that they're doing. You know, it's a huge undertaking to put that together, and the coordination that they have done to make things happen, along with all of our other departments, has been fantastic and made it so that that event can run smoothly. I know that every Friday night, we thank each of our departments from the stage except for that department, so I want to make sure that we thank them. And y'all come out Friday night.
Building goes, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that building permits and inspections were up in May, and we had roughly 21 businesses open in May. That's all I have. Thank you.
Businesses?
Except one, they just moved. Thank you.
Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. We had no action items from our committee meeting held earlier this month, but we did discuss the Golden Strip baseball tournament, summer camp, Trevor Booker's basketball camp that's coming up. Actually, I think it's already happened now. And then a feasibility study update for the Gilder Creek Trail. Leave everybody on council received a report by Mr. Madden on that. So that's my report.
Item on our agenda is unfinished business.
First ordinance we have is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately 8.1 acres located at 711 North Main and 713 North Main and providing an effective date.
BDS, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this rezoning at 711 and 713 North Main Street on second reading.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Ms. King? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for the rezoning on 711 and 713 North Main Street, say aye.
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 Those opposed like sign?
Aye.
One, Mr. Crayton sent. Okay, motion carries six, one. Next item, Ms. Kuzner.
Our next ordinance is an amendment to Chapter 10, Article 2, Business Licenses, Section 6, Deductions, Exemptions, and Charitable Organizations of the Malden Code of Ordinances to exempt short-term vendors at public markets from the business license tax.
BDS, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve this amendment on second reading.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Mr. Mattney? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Motion for short-term business license? Say aye.
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 Opposed like sign? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous.
This is an ordinance to provide amended appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 3, 2022, for ordinary and other city purposes to provide for a variety of taxes on all taxable property in the City of Malden for all city purposes, including sufficient tax for any principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness maturing in the fiscal year, and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming to the city during the fiscal year.
Ms. Kuzner, finance, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the FY 2022 budget amendment ordinance as provided in your packet.
Motion, Mr. Reynolds, is our second.
Second.
Ms. King? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion of approval of our budget amendments for the year 2022, say aye.
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 Opposed like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Next item, unfinished business. We do not need to consider it as informal committee of the whole as it was considered most for that method, so we just... Ms. Kuzner?
This is an ordinance establishing a sewer pump station fee for additional parcels of the Indigo Point development and for certain properties near and adjacent to the Indigo Point development, creating a lien for unpaid sewer pump station fees and other matters related thereto.
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance establishing a sewer pump station fee as provided in the ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Mayor, prior to the vote, I do want to just bring to your attention the exhibits that are enclosed with this ordinance, parcel number associated with the address 426 Forest Drive, will be removed, will need to be removed from this ordinance as they are on a septic tank, and their sewer flow will not be going into Indigo Point. So just wanted to make sure that was clear prior to voting on the second reading.
That's in Pine Forest?
In the Pine Forest. It's actually on Forest Drive.
Question?
Mr. Mayor, as required by our law, we are required to have a public hearing on this that was obviously taking place for this meeting.
Motion to give final reading approval to an ordinance establishing a sewer pump station fee for additional parcels. Good exception. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed like sign? Those opposed, like sign.
Next item is an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023, for ordinary and other city purposes, to provide a levy of taxes on all taxable property in the City of Malden for all city purposes, including sufficient tax for any principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness maturing in the fiscal year, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming to the city during the fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. About finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance for the adoption of the FY 2022, 2023 Annual Operating Budget as presented in your packet.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds, their second.
Second.
King, any discussions, questions?
Nothing major. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment that we held several public hearings on this, several public workshops, excuse me, where we discussed many, many items. This was a difficult budget year as there's certainly uncertain, there's certainly uncertainty coming forward. And so was very proud with the way the department heads as well as our city administrator and finance director. We're fiscally conservative while responsible to our citizens and the expectation of service that we provide. So this is a strong budget for that, and I'm excited to have it and go into it starting July 1.
Mr. Reynolds, have discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to give final approval to an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Business before us.
One ordinance for first reading, and that is an amendment to Chapter 18, Article 2, nuisances of the Malden Code of Ordinances to authorize the code's enforcement official, rather than the building and zoning director, to enforce certain provisions contained herein and to provide for and establish certain standards to protect against nuisances caused by light glare and light trespass and for other matters related thereto.
Thank you. Another BDS, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to open this up for consideration, or consider this item for input and open it for discussion.
Side on being open for discussion, feedback from the council.
Uh, point of order, doesn't there need to be a motion and a second for us to begin discussion on the agenda item?
Probably a motion to allow for discussion or input would be in order. It came out of committee as seeking input. Raise this motion to receive.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to bring this item before full council to, for input and open it up for discussion as it came out of the BDS committee.
And you're planning on returning it to?
To, yes, we'll return it to committee after.
Except input from full council and the input to be returned along with item to our BDS committee.
Sure, I'll second.
Second. Say second.
Yeah, I'll say I'll second that.
All right.
Just quick question. This is not an ordinance first reading as documented, correct? It's just discussion.
Just a discussion.
So, thank you, Troy Clark.
Directions for her, this particular one. Yeah, from my standpoint, reading it, I have the, a couple of sore points or points that I can't understand. Number one is taking it from BDS and putting it in the code enforcement. And my question with Chief Miller, is there any official training or equipment that your department has in order to determine a light glare and light trespass? Would your code enforcement officer be prepared to make a determination based on facts? You don't know of any current location on Frank. That's what I was afraid of because basically the way it's written, it comes down to declare an annusus based on a judgment call. And normally a code enforcement officer has laws or ordinances that clearly define what's the violation. And this comes down to a subject of, well, I don't like it. Somebody else says, well, it doesn't bother me. Then he's called in the middle saying, how do I determine what it is? So I think it needs a little more maturity. I think with our growth and our housing developments all over, well, all over the upstate, is what we're worried about the City of Malden, that working with our BDS department might be reaching out to some other communities that are more tour and to see if there is some type of light ordinance that sets up. I think we already have most of that with street lights and things of that nature to try to figure out somehow to determine, my simple brain says a right or a wrong. And if it's just a matter of opinion, then I was raised to recognize that every one of us has one. No disrespect to anybody as always. You have a right to your opinion, of course. So that, I guess that's the term I was looking for as here is the ordinary sensibilities. What's ordinary? I don't know. I was just trying to figure that out. And then down here on 69B, it says, you know, shall create a hazard. What's a hazard? The light's bright enough that I almost stumbled down my back step. That's a hazard. I just need some more maturity and some more research. That's my input, Ms. Kuzner, for this word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I was thinking about your first comment was that possibly someone from the BDS department could check the height and the looms and share that with code enforcement to tell them this is why it's not in code.
Just a quick question. Is there, may I ask, is there a definition of looms per so many feet that they'd be referencing to? I think that's, that's what the mayor's getting to is if it's so, if it's so bright at this point, this color, this color does make a difference as far as the intensity. You know, what is that? Can he measure it, define it and say this is out of spec? You can't have this. That way it's not subjective. It is truly objective based on the data. So that way there's no, like the mayor said, somebody has a different opinion. The, what are the causes of this? The area in reference to discuss? Absolutely agree. Just need to define what that means. What is, what is that nuisance? What is that interfering on somebody else's quality of life in that case? You just need to measure it. It needs to be something more quantitative, quantifiable. And I think if we have that, then I'd be supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for legal, please. If this item came out of committee as recommended consideration, would we not have to vote on it on first reading and then send it back to committee? They can do whatever between first and second reading. I just had a situation like this a couple of years ago that we had to vote, and so I'm confused. Any clarification, please?
See, guidance from committee, cause freedom of information requires from the committee, the quorum, gotta be in public. So the committee can't get y'all's input without it being in a public hearing or proceeding just like this. So I do not think, you know, it's to prohibit your body getting input to the committee by doing exactly what you're doing. Then committee goes back and takes that information, tries to get something that reaches a consensus of life. And I'm very comfortable with that. You're a legislative body, but you're limited what you can do as a committee because the FOIA says if you're going to vote on it, you gotta have a quorum. If they're not ready with all of the things that you consider without it, you've done this before.
Right. And yeah, thank you for the clarification. I was just, I had a particular situation about two years ago and the office that happened. It came out of my committee for consideration and we discussed it, but then we had to bring it up for vote. So I'm fine either way. I just wanted clarification. And this is a special case because there is two readings, so it's not a done deal if it were voted on tonight.
The only thing I want to say is, Mayor, what Mr. Hughes who took on this path track is, the City of Greenville has various standards, standards, starting with light, hitting the low gas, starting from town, but there is more detailed specifications in the cities. The other cities that we mentioned in the introduction, there is a second purpose, have lighting ordinances. So this was kind of, we need to give you all a starting point and then all the things that are set to define how specific.
Here, John.
I'll repeat briefly. What I was saying is that it is perfectly appropriate procedurally. When a committee of three members of council wants input from more, that creates a quorum under the Freedom of Information Act, and so it has to take place in a public meeting. But you don't have to vote on an item that the committee needs guidance on, but it needs to be done in public because FOIA requires. So you're all within your rights to have a discussion and give this committee guidance, which it can take back to refine this ordinance to try to find something that you all are comfortable with. And the second thing I said is that three surrounding cities have an ordinance similar to this one, but the City of Greenville's does give specific criteria with respect to lighting to be used for an enforcement of a lighting ordinance. That's the end of my.
Part of the rationale, Ms. Kuzner, was the fact, went back and look at the committee minutes. There was no recommendation for approval. It was to council for input. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would probably be more for Mr. Deerhog. As we deal with an issue like this, this strikes me as a subdivision that doesn't necessarily have an HOA to address this kind of item prior to ever getting us. So I guess what I'm looking at is do normally HOAs, would they keep this kind of issue from happening from the get-go? And I'm only asking this question because the city obviously has several subdivisions that are older that wouldn't have HOAs to address it prior to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, David Deerhog, Director of Business and Development Services. I am not familiar as to whether HOAs have standards that address this. In fact, this, this is an area that I'm not familiar with in general, which is why I turned to Mr. Hughes to help draft the ordinance sets before you. So I'm sorry, I can't give you any more specific information about that right now.
So that's a no answer.
That's an I don't know.
Okay, so, you know, this is one of those unfortunate situations. It seems to me that there may be more. Well, I'll hold my comments for anybody else who may have something else to add. I would love to hear from committee members that may have thoughts on the item. Thank you, Mayor. I think this is one of the reasons why we brought it up here because, Mayor, you said something to me that made me think. And you asked, what is a hazard? So my biggest thing when we were in committee is there is lack of a radius to define where the area the complaint can come from. My feeling is if someone was to go by a light and say that looks gaudy, or I think it might be a hazard, it's not really for them to say. To me, it's the neighbors that butt up against or within a defined area. And I just, I struggle with the language in here. So that brings me back to what is a hazard? If, if that was defined, what is a hazard, then passing by a light, if I can make a judgment call of I think that is a hazard, then maybe we don't need a radius. But I'm still kind of in the camp that I feel like to avoid, to avoid calls that just don't need to be answered because it's someone who's not impacted by the light. I still think a radius is, is key to this.
You reached out, there's anyone reached out on the research with D Power, Barstech Electric. There's a normal height of where they would put up a light at the edge of your property and join in backyard of your property if you wanted. Of course, you had to pay for it, but they have standards of how high they would put their poles and their lights. Anybody check?
They do have standards. What I don't know is if they change from time to time. I suspect they might, but, because it seems like you'll see some lights from, that have been up for a long time. That might be at heights than lights put up today, but I don't know what those standards are off the top of my head. We could certainly look into that.
Who else?
Okay, well, not only talking about hazard, but also in here is light trespass of such character, intensity or duration which substantially interferes with the public's right of way or with the comfortable enjoyment of persons with ordinary sensibilities. I know you were talking about that, Mayor. Occupying, owning or controlling nearby properties within the jurisdictional limits of the city is hereby declared to be unlawful, constitutes a nuisance and is prohibited. So we're also talking about the comfortable enjoyment of the people who are affected by the lighting. So hazard, yes, driving down the street, if it blinds you to where you can't see to drive, that, that's a big issue. I agree.
And kind of reiterate that it's a, sometimes it's a quality of life issue. If you have somebody with essentially the equivalent of sports teams, nightlights shining into your house, that's, you know, that, that's definitely an impact to somebody's quality of life. And I think that's where a lot of the stems from. There's a safety issue. There's a safety issue. Does it, you know, create shadows, makes it hard to walk? There are, there's things like that. So when you say safety, you generally put safety, there's, there is some standards that you can use in general for safety. Can't see how you're, where you're walking, if it doesn't, you know, if it causes a screw, you know, there's, there's things with that. With safety, it can be a little more subjective, because there is OSHA rules, there are things that you can reference. I think, but I do think if you can put a number on it, so it's clear and cut, and says if, if you're shining your light, it's impacting into this neighbor's yard, into your neighbor's house, into this walkway, into the street, this impacts safety, that's, that's one thing. And then if it's impacting quality of life, there has to be some kind of measurement that you can reference and say, this is above this, here's, here's what it's hitting. You can measure light, there are gauges out there that'll tell the intensity, like I said, the intensity brightness and color, color does make a difference because of the spectrum, but I think we just need to quantify it. And then from there, I think it'll be a much more palpable ordinance. As far as being next to, not next to, I think if you can measure the light on the property, that kind of gets rid of your radius too. If there's a measurement, you can say, okay, yeah, maybe two houses down, but the measurement here, because a light may not impact the two houses next to it, but may be aimed at the third house. Even the radius could make a difference. I think it just, but you could, if you can measure it, it's a, it's a done, it's, it's obvious. So that's my two cents.
I have another quick question. With regards to the holiday lights, which it says that it does not apply to holiday lights, but would that, that also apply to spotlights used during the holiday season?
The spotlights, do they beam in a neighbor's windows, or are they just aimed at the homeowner's own house to light up their, you know, what they may have in their yards, or something like that?
The attempt is to light up reindeer, but it could impact the neighbor. And that's why I ask.
I thought it had to do with Halloween, I'm sorry.
Halloween falls under the holidays as well, and there would be spotlights there as well. Of course, I speak for myself in that regard, but there's also many homes, I know there's, there's one behind, two behind Malden Methodist that really decorate for Halloween in particular, that use strobe lights, spotlights, that sort of thing.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand this to apply only to residential districts, right?
We have one already for businesses.
Right. Um, I think the one thing, this probably doesn't help you much, but under, under Section 18103 applicability, we have a sentence in there striking an exception for properties owned by the city of Malden. Under Section 18103 applicability, the requirements of this section shall apply to all properties, I'm sorry, 69. The requirements of this section shall apply to all properties within the city of, within the city, with the exception of properties owned by the city of Malden and lighting required by a DOT. So just from me personally, as I struggle with this anyway, I certainly would take exception to the city accepting itself out of an ordinance it's passing. I understand the legal side of that, but.
Is it on? Again, this was drafted as a guideline for you all to think about and refine. One thing I want to comment about from council is remember, it's an issue of brightness, it's an issue of haha. Mr. Krailing brought up, well, what if somebody wants to have a, a baseball field in his backyard and puts up a 50-foot hole with 20 lights on it? And right now, we don't address that at all. Another thing is shielded. So if you want to have lights on your reindeer at Christmas time, it's not complicated to shield that light from spilling over into your neighbor's yards, waving, shines very brightly into their light, their houses, when there are people that go to bed early for whatever reason. So there are ways to refine this. Certainly things like strobe lights, multicolored lights, and all of that. There's also issues about the time, you know, we require bars close to 8:00 AM. We can also address when you can have certain kinds of lighting when you can't. It's not a daytime issue, it's a nighttime issue. The question is, what's a reasonable time to shut off the reindeer lights if they are, you know, too bright? So there's plenty of work can be done to refine this. We had to put something out there for you all to think about, how you want to do this and how comfortable. Because right now, somebody can turn a very intensive light into somebody else's house for harassment or whatever reason. And there's no way we have recourse through the place for them to do anything about it. So it is something that I think is appropriate to consider. And then we just need to wrestle with refining it as much as possible.
One thing that I would like to say to Mr. Krailing's point is, back in between 2004 and 2006, there was a proposed stadium coming, and the lights were going to be right, they were gonna butt up the stadium and the lights right next to the subdivision, to where those stadium lights on, on the nights when they had games would affect all the people there. And the stadium got voted down for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think to Mr. Dugan's point, as I think about what, you know, what a crafty, angry neighbor could do, that would bother me, where you can spotlight something. So I can appreciate the committee looking at this as a potential problem. I don't know that I want to step into it, but it's one of those things that I can appreciate the committee looking, finding a problem and looking for ways to solve it. I think my comments would be the few that I've had thus far, and I'd wait to see the ordinance come back up before I'd be willing to vote on, be willing to vote on it.
Is there anything that anyone else would want to see in this, or kind of what is it in here already that you don't agree with, or maybe there's something that you would like to see that would be better?
I was just, gotta be some way to quantify ordinary sensibilities. Because we're all very unique and very different, so I'd like something, something to find that is what it is, and then the hazard type thing. Same thing with some definition, I'm not looking for an exact plus or equal score. I don't want two plus two equals whatever. That would be my rub on this, obviously, to find out, how do you enforce it? All of us can talk about, we have ordinances currently to define. Exhaust noises of cars. There's probably not a person in this room that couldn't give us examples of cars that obviously are not meeting that requirement. And what's the old adage, where's the police car when you need it? It runs through the red light, here the exhaust, or he slows down for the speed hump that we're putting in some of our neighborhoods, then he sees how fast they go from hump one to hump two, an open exhaust. It's just, we can write some good ordinances and some good laws, but they're unenforceable. I just think this, I can see this being, opinion that goes on and on and on, and there's plenty of attorneys that would love this to go on. Just a little bit clearer, and if there's references to other cities, municipalities.
Well, other than the, you know, the loud pipes and things like that, those are gone before a policeman could get there. Lighting isn't going anywhere. And I think that it's certainly measurable, once there is a complaint. This is not, this is not something that code enforcement's gonna drive around looking to make sure people are in compliance. This is, as we've been told, is complaint driven. So it would be only if someone complained, and there was, this, this ordinance is basically their recourse if there is no other recourse.
Yeah, I guess I got a little carried away. My point was trying to be that a noise, sound of a great General Motors V8 is music to my ears. Sound of a Mustang is just loud.
Or the backfiring of a vehicle.
Referenced, I have kind of thing, so that's the point I was trying to make about the noise. Some people consider it music, and others consider it noise. Some people will consider a jake brake on a diesel truck, noise. Some of us, like, hey, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one other comment, I did appreciate the code enforcement official being struck, her being the person to make these calls and taking the building and zoning director out of it. So there's, I could definitely, that's something I like.
Thank you, members of council, for your input. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to return this item to the BDS committee and allow the BDS Director, Police Chief, Code Enforcement Officer, and City Attorney to meet and discuss the input from tonight's meeting and bring additional information to committee in July.
I would prefer to take those comments, Ms. Kuzma, as comments, because we had the motion for us already to, for input for all council and return the comments as far as the additional correction to staff. Any other comments? Do you have none, all those in favor of the motion to, would you give an input to return this to committee with staff to work on? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have none of the motion? There's a standing.
Council authorization is requested to approve task, task order number one with KCI to provide stormwater project design services.
I believe that will come from P. W., Mr. Krailing.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to, uh, ask, ask council to approve task order 01 with KCI. We go to engineering, correct? The contract with them to provide the necessary stormwater management projects, the list, the infrastructure, and the work that we've contracted here too for them.
Most part, Mr. Friends, or second?
Mr. Reynolds? And I remember this coming through committee, I thought this was more of an information item that we didn't have to vote on, was I correct in that? We approved the funding, and it was more of a, here's direction, here's.
I asked that question in committee. This was, although it was not 100% necessary, they felt more comfortable if we sent it to the council for approval, so we agreed to do so.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman.
It is task, task orders. Couple of things for me on page 75, under Bishop Heights, there is not a lake, it's leak. So noted. Word in there using here is conveyed, right down below that issue is at block 435, where stormwater is directly conveyed from a pond. That actually flows to a pond, so I don't, I didn't look up the definition conveyed, does that mean water in or out? Still works, just in case, I saw that several times. Harrison Plaza, couldn't find a pond. But obviously, engineers and all. So, any other questions or comments? Do you have none, all those in favor of the motion to approve task order 01 with KCI for stormwater project signage, that later, you're packing tonight, so aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Do you have none much, Chair?
Council direction is requested on the acceptance of Loblawi Circle extension into the city's road inventory.
At this time, I'd like the city to approve acceptance, I mean, it's the council to approve acceptance of Loblawi Circle extension into the city roads inventory.
Is there a sec?
How long is the stretch?
I believe it's less than a quarter of a mile, it's not a long distance at all.
I believe it says here 315 feet.
I wasn't sure if that was specifically to the entire portion, or just that turn?
If you look at the, the map here, the shaded portion is incorporated city, and the part is, is the county. So it's that Loblawi section there from, what do you consider highlighted? It's Horse Creek Drive, north, might be North, North Creek Drive, that, that section there, the kind of right of the middle of that pond. See where it's kind of shading, Loblawi.
For example, this drawing to the current Loblawi extension, that's the one that deadens to the gate in order to get into the Rewall Pond.
Correct.
Okay, which is, but it'll all up to the gate backwards, it'll be brought up to Malden's road standards prior to us accepting it.
Correct.
So it goes from there out to Ridge, to the 90-degree, or on the way up to Ridge Road. Reason I ask, I remember when we recently took this into consideration of annexation, the developer and the county had agreed that they were going to have to correct the problematic intersection between Ridge Road and Loblawi. Oh, that was circle or extension there, where it merges together. Coming, it's like 160-degree turn to get back to Loblawi. They were gonna. They were going to get property fixed there. Is that still in it? And we're still making a ninety degree, what Ridge Road or the yellow dotted line show the continuation of a new road.
No, uh, they're, they're going to make that improvement to that right off of Ridge Road. This, this really isn't, this, this is separate from that.
Which section are we talking about? That's where I was, I kept trying to figure out exactly where we're going from.
We're talking about Lob Lolly Extension. So what you're referencing is Lob Lolly Circle. Eleven to twelve hundred feet is, is what we're talking about. And so this is the extension. This is the road that goes into that pond area. There are a couple of residents that live off of that road, but the road is, is not in the best condition right now. That, that's the road. But this is not Lob Lolly Circle. This is not the road coming off of Ridge Road. This is the road that's owned down where there's tracts of property that single family homes, not a part of a development.
Okay, so it would pretty much be to the right of the blue line waterway to the right, Lob Lolly's extension go.
I don't know if you can see my, my map here, but the, the, my cursor, but it's, this is Lob Lolly Circle Extension.
When it comes out to Lob Lolly, that's actually Lob Lolly Circle. That's where it stops and Lob Lolly Circle continues on that. Now, is that Lob Lolly Circle or Lob Lolly?
Once it, once it turns, it's Lob Lolly Circle, it's the extension, not Lob Lolly Circle. Mr. Fleman?
For clarification purposes, um, when Lob Lolly comes off of Ridge on the left-hand side of the, of the illustration where it has that hard ninety degrees, um, do you, you note that the, the parcel is not shaded, right? Could you put your cursor on it? So.
Talking about here. Oh, Ridge Road here, right here.
Lob Lolly from Ridge along adjacent to that parcel, which is not incorporated in the city, is still county roadway. All right. And then from where the, the shading of the city of Malden begins, that's portion of Lob Lolly from, from that, that junction point all the way down through the ninety degrees until where there's a blue line stream there, right? That section of Lob Lolly is currently in our roadway inventory. It has been upgraded. It has been expanded to met city standards. What they're asking is for that road that continues from the creek all the way up to the gates, um, of the Rewall Pond. The, the extension that goes north, that little, that, uh, yeah, from the creek heading north, that section is not in consideration and is not even in discussion to be, to be brought into the city.
Ridge Road, Lob Lolly, that green shaded area is counted.
Yep.
Then when it gets in the city, the right-hand side is city, the left-hand side is county. We've got the whole road already.
Got the whole road. It's been improved to met the city standards. Lob Lolly Circle is still county. The first section from Ridge Road. Yep. Until where you can see the, uh, the shaded part, which denotes the municipal boundaries. At that point, the roadway on both sides of the road is ours. So in a sense, we're cutting off, right? We cut off the county road. Yeah. And that's one of the reasons why they, they felt that we should accept the roadway into our inventory because that section of the county road doesn't connect to any other county road.
Mayor, let me ask something too while we're, while we're looking at it. So the houses that currently exist as we go down Lob Lolly Circle Extension, those are in the county. So what we're being asked to do is to accept a section of road into our road inventory that services residents who don't live in the city of Malden.
Correct.
At, at this time, though, there, there will be a future development where those folks that the road was serviced will be in the city of Malden.
The right-hand side or the left?
Both.
Both.
Both sides. So the, 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 there are three phases to this development. The only phase that's built out now is phase one. They will be building out the future phases that will be serviced by this road. But right now, this road only goes, will be going here and will, and the, the places that it will give access to will be in the city of Malden. The reason why the county is presenting it this way to the city is that it will not touch another city road. I mean, another county road. It will, it would just be kind of a donut hole of a road.
Here's where I get confused on the staff finding. Greenville County currently maintains Lob Lolly Circle from Ridge to the Greenville City, all in city limits, approximately three hundred and fifteen feet. From this point to the ninety-degree bend is jointly maintained. The left side of the road is Greenville City and the right side is Malden. So that didn't jive with what, I thought I, what I understood you said a while ago. We're making no effort to get the right side, the left side, keep your right side. Reading verbatim.
Right. I did not write that. I apologize.
Okay, I, I wrote that and if it is confusing, I apologize. So, uh, but essentially what is occurring is there's a road that will be, uh, plenty, that's currently, that currently exists that will provide an access for future Malden residents. So the request is, does the county, does the city want to accept that road into its inventory, bring it up to the city's standard because it will be serving future city residents? Or would the city not like to own that road and allow the developer to own that road, um, to, to access those, those future developments? That's, that's what's before the council.
You're saying city will accept it and bring it up to standard?
That's what's being, that, that's what direction is being requested.
The city will require the developer.
That makes real clear to me then. But as far as the left and the right side, we're not dealing with that tonight.
We're talking about Lob Lolly Extension.
Yes, Lob Lolly Extension.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, that would be the city requiring the developer to bring the road up to standard. Was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we had done with phase one.
Thank you.
Just said opposite of what I, the developer's going to bring Lob Lolly Extension up to our standards before we accept it as we have in the past.
Correct. What's before the council is, does the council want to accept this road as inventory? It will be brought up to standard. Either way, it's brought up to standard.
Other developer?
Yeah, the city's not going to do the work. Every developer that puts a road in or they bring it up to the city standard before it's accepted into the city's inventory.
So what would be the benefit of accepting in the city's inventory?
The city will be responsible for maintaining that road. So if there's issues because it's serving, it's a public road, it'll be accessible. It, it just makes sense, some could say, to have it to be a city road. Maintain it owned by the city.
Will there be sidewalks on this road? Either developer?
Yeah.
And I, I was just curious if, you know, as, because a motion will eventually be made, um, that it be specific enough that, uh, you know, when, when we make the motion, that it is contingent that we would accept it into the city's road inventory, contingent upon the developer bringing the road up to city standards and including necessary sidewalks as required by the city.
What were you going to do, boss?
Let me with, uh, with frog.
Just a second.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
This time, I'd like to, uh, ask the city, uh, the council to, uh, for the acceptance of Lob Lolly Circle Extension into the city's road inventory under the condition that the, um, developers, uh, bring the road, the current road up to city standards and that, uh, they also provide the, uh, already defined sidewalks, uh, before we accept this, brought this into our inventory.
Second.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, as you know, we lawyers are worst-case planners. And if you do this contingent without having an understanding with developer in writing, developer goes bankrupt, where, where do you stand? In the process, as I understand, we normally do is a developer comes to us and says, I have this development, I want y'all to approve it, bring it into the city, and I agree by contract to make the improvements to this development. I'm confused why we're getting the pardon for the horse tonight. And I just want to point that out to you all. And is there any reason for urgency here where you're agreeing to do something without knowing what developer is going to do? You know, if, if there is urgency and y'all feel like you need to do it, fine, but I hadn't heard anybody say this has got to be done tonight. So I, I, you know, I just raised that issue out of concern.
Mr. Mayor. Before, Mr. Dear Hogs, I am coming up. Um, just to clarify, it's my understanding, all we're voting on is to bring this road into our city inventory. And then the standards are there and the, based off of what common practice already is. Am I missing something?
Just that we don't bring it in, we wouldn't bring it into road inventory if the developer didn't do what they were supposed to do. So even if they went bankrupt, we wouldn't accept the road into the inventory, correct?
That's correct. So they'll have to do all the improvements on the road and we'll have to inspect it before we accept it into our inventory. So until that point in time, when all the improvements have been completed and it's been inspected, inspected, it meets all our standards at that, until then, it continues as it is now, which we believe is a county road and will continue to do so. The county has indicated that they are, they have no interest in maintain, continuing that as a county road. So really what the developer is left with as an option right now is either for the city to accept it or for them to figure out a way to do it as a private road. That's really the two options they're considering.
But based on Mr. Krailand's amended motion, we don't do squat until they've done everything that they need to do.
Yeah, that's correct.
That is the currently planned, yeah. The process of permitting and inspection.
Yeah, we have land development regulations that say what criteria the road has to meet and the standards it has to follow.
The recession of two thousand seven, two thousand eight opened the eyes of local governments. And I can tell you, in Greer, we had a number of subdivisions where there weren't adequate bonding by developers. City had taken them in and got caught with the financial obligation to finish them for those neighbors. Way we recommend you do this, if developer comes to you with a specific plan, including that he will improve the road to city standard, he's going to put up a bond so if he fails, we got the money to finish the road. Because if you have a bunch of people, we had a subdivision with three hundred and fifty homes and they had never finished the, um, stormwater system, they had never put the final coating on the street and curving and all of this kind of stuff. And guess who ended up paying for it? That's Greer. And, and I'm going to just tell you, y'all got to make this judgment, but I'd make this developer, my recommendation is this developer brings his plan and he brings his commitment to build this road to standards and he presents you with a performance bond that if he doesn't, the performance bond, we can streak and use that money to finish that road. So to me, we're doing the fourth horse and that's not the way you're, we would ordinarily do. So I, you know, y'all certainly have a discretion with this.
If we are not in possession of it now, we will not take possession of it until it meets the standards that we are requiring. How could that affect us on this particular case? We've not owned this till after we've accepted it.
So when we get ready to plat the additional phases that will be on this road section, all of the improvements that have not been completed do get bonded, uh, including the improvements on this road. So, um, really the worst-case position that we're looking at is they've platted some of the lots that are off of this road and they start building homes on it. And at some point, as Mr. Duggan referred to, perhaps they go, they go south and don't finish their project. At that point, we have funds that we can tap into through their bonding to go out and complete the work still. So that's what would happen with this project. It will get bonded as part of their plat process and, um, they'll be on the hook to complete that. If they don't, we'll have funds available to, to, to complete that with. And, um, even at that point though, we still don't accept the road into our system until it's been completed and passes all the inspections. But we have, really, we are taking an obligation to complete it for the benefit of any homes that might be built along that section in the.
Two separate, which is.
Any red.
One being the property of the development, one being the road.
Yeah.
We're only discussing the road here today, correct?
Correct.
And all we're saying is when the road is complete to the standards that we've defined and we are happy with it essentially, then we'll accept it.
Right.
We would not accept it unless that was at that, the homes and the housing, what you're talking about, uh, that'd be bonded separately with the projects in a separate action, not, not, not having anything to do with this particular road.
Correct.
Concern I have, be clear, is you don't recommend you take this road into the city.
We, we won't be. We're not. It does not happen until they've brought up spec. There's only after, correct? I'll make sure we're clear on this. It's only after. All right, I just want to make sure.
Your conditions of use of motion.
Mayor.
Excuse me.
So why are we, why is this before us, the acceptance of Lob Lolly Circle Extension? If we're voting on this tonight, when are they, when are they proposing to do the road?
They want to be able to proceed in good faith, knowing that if they go forward with constructing the improvements on this road as required by the city, that after that point, it will be accepted by the city and be taken on as a city road. At that point, the city will be responsible for any future maintenance on it.
Okay, thank you.
So it does, it's not a private road at that point? The developer doesn't have to come back and re-pave it in thirty years or whatever that number is?
Okay, correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question. Second?
Second. Vote on the call for the question.
Yes.
Call for the question. There's a second. All those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You know, the question has been called for. Before us is a motion for the acceptance of Lob Lolly Circle Extension to the city's road inventory under conditions, developer bring the roads to the defined standards and necessary sidewalks as deemed.
After.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign?
Chief.
services. There are two quotes in here, one is for a 60-month lease, $312 per month, that's a separate lease, and one quote is for a co-terminus lease, which would be 35 months, that would go with the other copiers that were approved in January of 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the signing of a contractual agreement with Dex Imaging for judicial copier services, approving the previously leased approval for January 2020. This is slightly more expensive than keeping these on their own lease, but it allows, as we go out for copiers at the end of this term, it allows you to have a couple more copiers on there, and hopefully get better pricing, because you would bring in more copiers. Slightly more expensive than going off on their own five-year term, but I think in the long run, you'll be able to bring more copiers, like I said, and hopefully get a better rate, because you're bringing more at the termination of the 60-month lease from 2020, which terminates June 2025.
So your motion is for the co-terminus lease.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
June 2025, two new copiers, $388 per month.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Miller for giving me reasons to use co-terminus in more conversations this week.
Thank you. I was thinking that was Fox's word of the day. At least we can use co-terminus.
You noticed I didn't use it, I was afraid I would mispronounce it.
I was proud I can pronounce. Any questions? One thing I would note would be, by doing a co-terminus lease, we're going to pay over the next 36 months, $2,736, just where all copiers, except for the two we're not picking up yet, because they haven't, they still have new contracts, where they could all be terminus on the same date. So instead of phasing them in with the same supplier, you're now going to take, I'll make a number of, seven copiers in cold turkey, replace them all at the same time. I don't see any other benefit for co-terminus other than the council is 36 months to being in business, I was very familiar with the master agreement, and then phasing in our copiers where they'd all have to be replaced, kind of like the place all the air conditioners in seven different buildings. For all to co-terminus. Thank you. Anyone else? You're not, all those in favor of the motion to accept Dex Imaging a co-terminus lease by adding these two machines with the previous approved machines in the, in 2025, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? No?
Next is an approval of amendments to the city alcohol policy to no longer charge event attendees from wristbands to purchase and consume alcohol, and to allow attendees at city-approved events that are ages 21 and up to purchase alcohol directly from vendors that are authorized by the city to participate in the event.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendments to the city alcohol policy as noted in your package with an effective date of July 1.
You have a motion.
I happen to be in attendance when this was discussed in committee, and one of the things that was discussed in committee, I think was brought by Mr. Madden, was perhaps doing away with wristbands altogether and just doing direct sales to each merchant. I didn't know if there was any thoughts on that. Anyone had anything to share? It's more of a statement.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask Gina to come up, just from an operational standpoint, I know that there were some concerns about the, about the policy and the implementation, and since they're the ones that have to deal with them on a weekly basis during the summer and with, with our festivals as well, I'd like to get her input, make sure that we're giving them enough time to transition in taking vendors and patrons into account.
Write your name and tell everyone who you are.
Mayor for comment? Quick comment, that was part of the reason that we went ahead and asked for an effective date of July 1 to accommodate staff. Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mayor, thank you, council members. My name is Gina McAtee, and I'm the community events coordinator for the city of Malden. Thank you for that July 1 date, that's what I was up here to ask for, just so we could prepare our community members, our volunteers, and our partner Growler House to implement the new policy change, and allow us to effectively promote that to the public via social media, our website, and to give me time to announce that at this week's event. So I don't feel like I need to speak on my points necessarily for that, but I do have a comment on the wristbands. I do think it would be beneficial if we could still check IDs and have volunteers to support Growler House in that way, since we are on city property, to be responsible for checking those IDs and issuing wristbands to make it easier for when they do go out to purchase alcohol. That's another step that Growler House doesn't have to take. They can just see that they have a wristband on and go ahead and take payment that way. I think that would help speed the process up and help with lines, so we could set up directly beside them and have a couple volunteers a week instead of having eight. So I would like to still do wristbands if possible, that's my input. But that's all I had to speak on.
Any questions as far as who would pay for the wristband?
Right now, we have a huge inventory of wristbands, so if it's something that needed to change in the future, but we could technically go through those, wristbands are very inexpensive, they're about $10 for a pack of 500, so I do have the budget for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, it's not a question, but just to reiterate what Gina was saying, the number eight says only wristbands provided by the city can be used, so we don't necessarily have to sell them, but I, I do agree would, would be beneficial if we had those one or two volunteers, which that's kind of a, something that you could work out with our sponsors. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yes.
Question, do we even need wristbands? Growler is going to be IDing, is you purchase spirit wine, do we?
If we're able to still check wristbands, if, if they're going to be IDing and doing everything on their own, I don't think we need wristbands unless you want to visually be able to see that people did go through the process and are old enough to drink, instead of someone purchasing it and then handing it off to potentially someone 21 or less than the age of 21.
We had any occurrences, chiefs, chiefs?
I was just going to say, looking at the, the response of public safety here tonight, I believe that they would feel more comfortable if the wristbands were still implemented as a source of identification and just another source of verification. But given, given the, the wristbands away to the people who go through the ID check process, you know, that still provides some liability coverage there, I would hope. And I don't see if there's any reason we can't do that.
I know when I have gone up before to get wristbands and my husband wasn't with me, I could get two, I could have given them to anyone, and I kind of find that problematic.
I agree, yes, but that's not supposed to happen. Everyone is supposed to get their ID checked, regardless of age, and have an, have a wristband. So everyone should be coming up and getting a wristband, and that's something we can acknowledge with our volunteers too, and make sure that that is happening correctly.
One more question. Do you think Growler House would be, would have a problem with having to ID someone when they come up to buy beer or wine, and, and if they're 21 or older, give them the wristband at the same time?
I don't know if they would have a problem with it, I think it's more just speeding up the process. I know I talked to Growler House, and they do this with Fountain Inn, and I'm not sure exactly their, their, the way they do it there and their process, but I do know that he did mention that it does create large lines to do everything at one location. So that's kind of the concern, especially when community members are used to having a certain process here at our event, to have everything there and just have a backup of lines. That's why I was, would like if we could still do wristbands, that's fine with me, and, and getting volunteers for that to hopefully help streamline that process.
Okay, so you said that in Fountain Inn, Growler House does it?
Yes, they take care of all of their own credit card charges, cash boxes, everything like that. I'm, I'm not sure what the wristband policy is for the city of Fountain Inn. Thank you.
Having bartended in a past life, they're not going to want to stop and check everybody's ID as they're going through line. Lines are long enough as they are. I think by us continuing to do this, putting the wrist straps on, we make sure they're being checked, checked properly, hopefully, and not giving to shifty people such as Diane without giving her two, two, two wristbands.
I've seen them.
I don't know what she does with the other one, but, but realistically, I think that would, that would hinder, make longer lines during our events, and we, we really don't want to do that if not necessary.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to remind everybody, this isn't just about Beach and Fridays, we do have other events during the year that this would be applicable to. From an operational standpoint, this doesn't say how wristbands would be doled, I, I think that there's a, an operational way that staff can work with vendors to provide volunteers to handle the ID process, to provide those wristbands, and I, I think we probably have that, that leeway here, but we don't, I don't think we want to get Growler House specific, we don't need to get Beach and Fridays specific, this is about an overall policy for alcohol sales at city events, at the cultural center, and how that works. So I think as long as we're IDing, as long as we're providing wristbands, that allows any beverage vendors to do what they want to do, which would be direct sales.
Is there any thought of using multiple vendors?
I haven't looked into it, we've worked with Growler House for multiple years, so that's the partnership that we have, but it's something I could look into.
They're a Malden business?
I don't think they're necessarily a Malden business, I think they have a location in Fountain Inn, and maybe another couple locations.
I, I, never mind. It, it wasn't related to the wristbands, so.
I, I had a statement to put on the bottom of this, basically be sure that council calls your, calls your attention page, just like 118 where it shows the boundaries. I was part of this council when we put in the alcohol policy, went through the various reputations and the public backlash that a couple of us endured for years because of alcohol policy. But you'll note that the boundaries for alcohol sales, where our volunteers sit on that side of the cultural center grounds, on that side of city center, is what's allowed. Alcohol sales on the other side of the drive is not allowed, and I would ask us to be sure that we stay true to the ordinance that was passed on that 50th. Be sure that we get Growler House on the right side of the road.
Will do.
Any other comments, questions?
Mayor.
Now, let's see.
Mayor. This was just a question. Because now that we have had a number of city events since 2015, and it's now 2022, we've seen how they work operationally, we've seen how vendors are able to set up and space out, and perhaps we have, I won't even say perhaps, we have outgrown the shaded area. I, I really would like for us, as we look at this policy, to also amend the map to reflect where our vendors are, are operating. I think that it works for a great event, it keeps people from being clustered, and allows for a, a good degree, a good degree of, of separation. So I mean, we've, we've had the map presented in the packet, and I don't know that it would be off limits for us to amend the shaded area if there wouldn't be a lot of heartburn about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem looking at that in the future, but because it's a policy, it's a one, one item, we just have to read one time. I say we have staff, give staff a chance to come back, shade what they think would be best for their logistical concerns, and then bring it back to us, and if we so desire, we amend it at that point.
That means that this Friday, we're going to have a lot of people in a little tiny space, just pointing that out.
Is it the same, a lot of people that have been in a little tiny space for this season?
No, they've been spread out.
Okay.
They've been over on the other side, that's what's allowed it to, to work and to flow.
Actually, we're not fully utilizing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Growler House being right next to the park where the children play is more of the issue. If one of the other vendors would park on that side and let Growler House not be right across, or right but up to the park, I think, I think it would be better. I don't think that all of the vendors need to be on that one side, I guess is what I'm saying, but Growler House, in, from what I can remember, is right, right on the park side where the children are.
Have no firsthand knowledge of the chocolate. Okay, we're ready for.
The request on page 112, delineates the specific things that are before this body for vote tonight, does not include amending the original ordinance, change diagram, called territory. We've not properly noticed that issue to address it tonight, nor has a committee had time to vet it and so forth. So with all due respect, I don't think it's before you. I know you have an upcoming special call meeting, I think you'll get input and address that as committee of the whole, but there's no appropriate notice to revisit the map issued tonight, 2000.
Letting the record show, Duggan agreed with me. Letting the record show, Duggan agreed with me.
Ready for the motion, call of the question here. Help me with this. The motion is to allow for the direct sales alcohol purchases by the vendors effective 7/1/2022.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none, the motion carries, you know.
Mayor, just to make sure, this, this, the motion that you just approved, there will be no charge for the wristbands?
Correct.
We didn't cover that.
Wristbands weren't in the motion, so there probably needs to be another, a separate motion.
Well, it was the, the motion was for the approval of the amendments to the city alcohol policy, as stated in your package, which is covered in there.
Yeah, I know there was some discussion about not doing the city providing wristbands, but there not being a charge for the wristbands. I just want to make sure that it's.
For the packet, the charge has been struck.
Okay, wristbands have been struck. That's what I thought. It says the city will furnish the wristband.
Got it. We still need to address the motion dealing with the wristbands, because your motion only dealt with direct sales.
So he restated the motion.
Then I misstated the motion. The motion is to accept the approval of the amendments to the alcohol policy. No longer charged for wristbands to purchase some alcohol, allow attendees to city approved ventilation directly from vendors that are authorized in the city to participate in the event.
So Mayor, to clean this up, would you like for me to go ahead, having voted on the prevailing side, and move to reconsider the previous vote?
Please bail me out.
I just did. Just need a second.
Second. I was saying, Mr. Pratt, to reconsider Mr. Matt's motion, especially you're none, others in favor of the motion to reconsider. Aye.
I can restate the motion. I can make, I would like to make a motion for the approval of the amendments to the city alcohol policy as stated in your packet. Thank you, July 1.
2020. Motion for Mr. Reynolds. In discussion. You're none, all those in favor of his motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none, the motion carries. Next page. Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve Exhibit B, insurance and bonds of the construction manager at risk contract for the construction of the fire station and police substation.
We asked coming out of public safety.
Ms. Miller said it perfectly. Mention to approve Exhibit B, insurance and bonds of the construction management at risk contract for the construction of the fire station and police substation.
Motion, Ms. Kingsley.
Second.
In discussion. You're none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none, the motion carries.
Council is requested to approve a digital government services customer agreement with the South Carolina Department of Administration and South Carolina Internet Interactive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to accept the digital government services customer agreement.
Ms. Kingsley, a second. Favor of the motion to accept approval of the yes customer agreement. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Council is requested to approve a records retention schedule.
Say, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll move to approve the retention schedule for the Malden Police Department.
Ms. King, is there a second? New discussion. You're none, all those in favor of the motion approval of the record retention schedule, please say aye. Three items appearing before us, as committee of the whole requested, what's the council's?
Mayor, move that we consider items I, J, and K via the informal method.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're none, move. The items, via the informal method. Aye, Ms. Miller.
Sorry. This is a resolution allowing the city of Malden to continue the cooperative agreement with the county of Greenville and the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority in order to maintain urban county status with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
U.S. Department of Development.
Mayor, move that we approve the resolution allowing the city of Malden to continue the cooperative agreement with the county of Greenville and Greenville County Redevelopment Authority in order to maintain urban county status with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Motion, Mr. Madden, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Saying the resolution also.
In discussion. All those in favor of Mr. Madden's motion to approve the resolution with G C R A to continue, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. The next item, J, is bridgeway station, pedestrian bridge lighting option, economic
The mayor, that is not in my digital packet.
No, there was no supporting documentation in discussion. And what we have had asked to be considered is bridgeway station lighting option one, which is included in the contract that we approved sometime in the past. They asked us to look at the options. Option two was a white LED lighting that would be computer controlled. It would cost an additional $195,000. Or option three, same LED colored with computer control that would cost an additional $240,000. So that council has been asked to consider, do we stay with option one, two, or choose two with the corresponding budget, or three, corresponding budget?
What you said.
The motion is to accept.
Choosing up.
Move for option two?
Motion for option two, which would be white LED, computer controlled, that would look for a source of funding of an additional $195,000. Motion, which was H and A, budget surplus anticipated.
Yes, coming from H and A, according to Mr. Madden.
Mr. Madden, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King, any discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the motion of selecting option two for the pedestrian bridge lighting with the corresponding increase in the budget, $195,000 from surplus, H and A. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
This one I do have.
You, Ms. Miller.
The last item is the AT&amp;T utility tax credit agreement.
Mayor, move that we accept the AT&amp;T utility tax credit agreement in the amount of $50,000 for certain expenditures for the bridgeway station. Certain expenditures for bridgeway station project, which include connecting a trailhead, clearing, site prep, grading, and construction of a trailhead gateway.
Motion is our second. Motion to accept the AT&amp;T utility tax credit. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you know, the motion carries. Still with, we are at two public comments, so if you would love to come up and state your name and address, you can.
Good evening. I'm not used to the speaker, so bear with me here. My name is Charlene Miller. I live at nine Bramblewood Terrace in Simpsonville. I have a few issues that I'd like to bring up about the Malden Recreation Baseball that occurred this year. I've spoken with several people in the Malden Recreation, and I think you, as the council, need to know some of the issues that we've had. First of all, I have, I've been involved with Malden for many years. I was the postmaster in Malden for about 14 years and retired six years ago. So I know a lot of families in Malden. I didn't realize until I was going to my grandson's baseball games that I knew a lot of the young parents who had kids there also in, on different teams. So this is not coming from one coach. This is coming from several parents, several coaches, several coaches' wives. They've been scared to say anything because they think they'll be retaliated against, that their kids would be retaliated against the coaches, you know, the whole rigmarole. So here I am. My grandson played on a Pirates team on an eight and under. He had a five-year-old as the youngest player, and I think he's the only five-year-old in the eight-and-under league. I could be wrong, but I'm, I'm pretty sure he's the only five-year-old. We had a little girl on the team, and then all the other boys were eight and under. So these are young kids. My grandson, this was, he's eight, this was his first year playing baseball. It should have been a great learning experience. It should have been a great fellowship experience, but because of the issues that we came across, he doesn't want to play baseball anymore, which is pretty sad, and I don't think he's the only one. First of all, we were on the Pirates. Like I said, most of the kids were new to the game. We had a new coach, who was great, by the way. I never had a conversation with the coach, but I saw how he interacted with the kids. I did have one phone call with the coach after this season was over, and he, he let me know that he didn't want me to say anything because he's scared he'll be retaliated against. He wants to stay with Malden Rec. He doesn't know if they'll let him coach anymore. We played a team, like I said, our team was the new team. Everybody else had established coaches, everybody else had established kids. We had the new kids, which, you know, this was a learning experience, so it was going to be a good, good season. We played a coach named Tony Norris. His team was the White Sox. Four, three to four times, I might, I might be wrong, it might, I think it might just be three, three different times, they were called out for using illegal bats during the game. The umpire kept talking to the coach. We had a little teenager behind the bay, the home plate, that would take the bats back over, and he, he realized they were illegal bats. Three different times, they called out illegal bats, which might not seem a big deal, but it would be a legal issue if one of the kids got hit with an illegal bat, because the balls go faster or go harder. I don't know about those bats, but they were illegal bats. When the coach went to talk to Malden Rec, they had already heard from Tony Norris, and the situation was resolved. We were told they forfeited that game. So we would, we didn't win the game because we were new and not that great. The day after we were told it was forfeited, then we were told it was nullified, which means they wiped the game from the slate. It was as if the game never played, which is kind of odd. I've never heard of that happening before, a nullified baseball game. We went on through the season, there were a couple of other little issues that I'm not going to bring up. Low and behold, we were the losing team on the, you know, of the season. I think they won two games, which wasn't bad because the kids were just happy to be playing ball. At the, we played, at the end of the season, they have a tournament. We played in the tournament. We won our game. Everybody else lost games. They ended up in the championship game. Okay? So we thought, okay, we'll at least be second place. They'll lose the championship game. Those little kids played hard. They won the game. They celebrated. The umpire went straight to the opposing coach, who was Tony Norris, and before they could, everybody was out of their dugouts. Everybody was celebrating, everybody was sad. Before they could get together, I think the two guys from Malden Rec had come, come down there to give out the awards to the winning team. The umpire had gone straight over to the, to the White Sox coach, and he came out and decided that they had only played 48 minutes, so there had to be another inning. What they didn't realize is the coach of the Pirates GoPro'd every game. He had, that's how he knew about the, the bats. He GoPro'd every game to what, he hung it on the, of course, we didn't know it either. He hung it on the back of the, Kate, the wire back there and tried to help his guys bat better. He watched how they batted, how he pitched to them, how he could help them. So he GoPro'd every game. He knew everything that happened in the games. From the Malden Recreation Rules, it says if you've played 50 minutes, that's the end. You don't start another inning without, if it's 50 minutes, if it's over 50 minutes. So this umpire decides it's 48 minutes. The, the, he has unrefuted evidence. The game started at 6:12. The last inning was, they were, they played till 7:04, right after, was at least 52 minutes. He has photos of the game. They played, I mean, there was a huge issue after that, you know, everybody was, all the parents were mad, the coaches, the everything. Kids were crying because they thought they won the game. They did win the game. It was ripped away from them by an umpire who ran straight to the other coach. There's also a regulation that the umpire is supposed to have a start time given to the scorekeepers. That wasn't done. So I don't know if he made up a time. The guy, the coach of the Pirates had the time. He's got, I've got pictures on my phone. He's got them with his recording. We talked to Malden Rec. I spoke to Bart. I also spoke to the city administrator. The Pirates coach spoke to the head umpire, who wouldn't do anything to rectify, even if, even when they, we had the proof. He was told, and I'm not sure if he was told by Malden Rec or by the head umpire, but the coach was told, we'll do better next year. He was told, and I'm not sure if he was told by Malden Rec or by the head umpire, but the coach was told, we'll do better next year. They won that tournament. Even though they shouldn't have, they did win it. You were talking earlier with the the weightlifter about building confidence. These guys crushed those kids' confidence. I would like to request that they be given, I'm not saying take the medals away from the other team, but I think they should be given medals and hats or whatever they were given, because they were the champions. And they should be acknowledged as the champions. And as the city, as city council, I'm requesting that you think about it, whatever we need to do to do that. Because these kids were run over and I think the integrity of the Malden Recreation Baseball team is in jeopardy. And it's because things happen and they're not addressed or these people are scared to talk about it or, or go to anybody because they're, they're scared something's going to happen with their kids. Something's going to happen. You're not going to be able to coach. And it shouldn't be that way. This should be a learning experience. They learn sportsmanship. These kids learned none of that at that last game. And I thank you for listening to me and letting me speak and hopefully you can address it. And it won't happen again. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel concerns. Ms. King.
Real quick, I just, it's just a comment, not a concern, but tonight is Mr. Madden's last council meeting as our city administrator, and I just wanted to thank him for all the hard work he has done over the years with our city and I for one will miss seeing you to the left of me. And I promise there was no conspiracy. I think this is the longest meeting we've had in a long time. We did not purposely do that for your benefit. So best of luck to you. You still have one more committee round to go with us, but thank you for everything. I would just like to say that over the past couple of weeks, I've noticed some really tall weeds along Main Street and I think that they've been cut now, but like Mr. Mattney has said before, dress for the job you want. Not the job you have. And we are trying to promote our city and I believe that anybody coming in seeing abandoned buildings with tall weeds is just not a good look for our city.
I just have one final note. I hope everyone had a great Father's Day this past Sunday and also many communities across the country were celebrating Juneteenth. It became a new federal holiday. And it was celebrated in Greenville and Spartanburg and various places around the upstate. So I just wanted to wish everyone also a happy Juneteenth.
Counsel on motion of adjournment. It's moved.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.